All right, well, I got six o'clock here in Colorado. That means it's seven o'clock there. So let's get this show on the road. Welcome to the Town of Long Beach Town Council meeting for February 8th of 2021. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance and we'll all look at Chris's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Election of council president. Yeah, I guess every year we elect a new president. So I'll take nominations for president.
Don't we have to do the minutes and stuff first?
My minutes, the election.
Okay.
Yeah. So anybody want to make a nomination?
I nominate Bob Lemay. I'll second it.
Any other nominations? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I think you guys just want me running these Zoom meetings. That's what I think.
That's right.
It's high comedy, Bob.
That's right. Just keep admitting people. All right, so. Let's just try and do this a little quicker. Does anybody have any problem with any of the 1-2-3-4-5-6-7-8 minutes?
I was going to make a motion to approve all the minutes en masse, starting with November 9.
Do I hear a second?
I second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great. That was quick.
Hey, I have one correction though, if I may.
Okay.
Somewhere online had talked about the Stop 21 installation of the shore protection. And it said that we're going to pull the steel back out that's at the bottom. We are, the private individual is pulling his steel out.
Yeah.
At the home to the west, but we actually installed some uprights that we're going to use to support the new stairs going down. So those will not be pulled. Those are going to stay. I just want to make that clarification.
Yeah. You probably should make your motion and second with that little correction then.
So that's a motion?
Yes, with the correction.
And do I hear a second?
Second it.
All in favor say aye.
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 Okay, Bill. So that's one correction. I guess we'll have to figure out where that is. It's on one of them.
Okay. If I might comment that the minutes took a lot longer to do than the appropriate.
It took a long time just to read them.
Yeah.
Okay, so I have no opening remarks, but I would like to make a motion. And that would be to, and make an addition to the agenda. And I'd like to add an agenda item and I'm going to label it Town Manager. And I want to make that the last agenda item under New Business. So that's my motion. Do I hear a second?
I second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so it's added to the agenda. Police Department report, Chief.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to change up how we do our monthly reports. So rather than kind of going through miles driven and some of the other kind of boring topics, I just want to kind of hit some of the highlights for you. And I've also sent the reports ahead of time to all the council members. So if there's any questions, I would welcome those as well. We had 45 traffic stops for the month that resulted in six citations, 36 written warnings, and three verbal warnings. We had a total of two arrests. One was for a operating under the influence, which was a misdemeanor charge. And the other one was a traffic offense for driving while suspended, also a misdemeanor charge. The OWI arrest was in the town of Long Beach. And the misdemeanor traffic offense was in the town of Michiana, that particular arrest. We also took five reports for the month. The significant ones where we had on January 2nd, a very unfortunate death investigation where we assisted a fire and EMS here in Long Beach. A 61-year-old was found to succumb to COVID-19, which was very unfortunate. And then we had a criminal mischief report that we took in the town of Dunland, referenced a door damage and some broken windows. And then on January 27th, Deputy Jason Jagelski went above and beyond, assisting a resident in the 3500 block of Kelly Met in Dunland, where the homeowner came home and found that their home was flooding from water. A water line to the refrigerator had broken. And we assumed it probably burst maybe to the cold weather. And Jason was able to go down into crawl space and assist the homeowner by turning off the water there. I have a couple of requests. First is to dispose of a 2013 Ford sedan police interceptor. That is the unit that was previously assigned to Deputy Mitchell Sights. As all of you know, that unit lost the transmission here about two weeks ago. So I'm asking for the consent of the council to go ahead and dispose of that vehicle at public auction here behind the police department sometime in the next following months.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. The next one I have is today I sent out an inventory list to the council members of electronics that we've found here in the building over the last month. We've kind of been going through some of the closets in the basement. We found quite a bit of inoperable electronics from monitors, laptops, desktop units, previous fax machines. All of them have either been deemed inoperable, damaged, or out to date by our IT contractor. We've taken a specific inventory of all the items. So we have the serial number, make and model of the items as well. And I would ask for a consent of the council to dispose of those items as well.
I'll make that motion.
Mark, does that include the stuff we had from Bill and Deanna and then from the water?
It does. And we've listed those by serial number. And then also all of the hard drives from all of the computer items have been removed and will be destroyed properly.
There's a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Cool.
Then I just have three other items. Again, I just wanted to update everybody on the ammunition ordering. As you know, originally I was told 10 to 12 months on ammunition orders for law enforcement agencies. There's currently a high demand in both the private sector and on the law enforcement side. I've now been updated that a lot of those orders are now 12 to 14 months out. So I've already went ahead and placed an order for the police department to get enough ammunition to last us at least two years. And then we'll see that invoice sometime in 2021. And then again, probably at the end of next year, we'll look at ordering additional ammo for the future, once we get a better idea where the country is with its ammunition supply. So I just wanted to update everybody on that one. The 30-day rental, that contract with Granicus has been going well. We had our kickoff meeting with Granicus. Nicole did an excellent job bringing Renee and myself up to date on their software program and what they can do for the town. As all of you know, working on the short-term rentals is a goal for all of us. It's not one where we want to make it punitive, but we're seeking compliance across the town. So we have now shared with them the GIS file. They have all the data that they need to build out the database for us. And we've been told in about eight weeks, we should be fully up and running. As I shared with you in my previous email, they're asking for a public awareness, maybe press release from the town, letting the residents know that we've partnered with Granicus, what their capabilities are, and that the goal of the town is to seek compliance in that area. Is there any questions on Granicus from anyone?
Mark, I would suggest that since a lot of people don't take the newspaper anymore, that we still do the newspaper, we do the Beecher, and then we put it on the website.
Okay, very good.
I mean, just to keep people informed. Or if you think we need to send out a letter, we can get a list of homeowners from the water department.
Or maybe I could give a email to Bill that he could send out on the mass email distribution list as well.
Well, one of the problems is, and I'm probably in that category, some people don't do. I do emails, but I mean, older people don't always have a computer or do emails. So we just want to be sensitive to our older, you know, residents too.
And also with Granicus, they have an excellent program in place where we'll send out a first violation notice letter, then a second violation. And then subsequent to that would be an actual citation. We'll be working closely with Attorney Willoughby as well. Chris can assist us on making sure that the letters are, you know, proper for what he's going to need if there's any civil proceedings as well. But from what I've seen thus far with Granicus, I think it's going to be an excellent program. And hopefully it'll work well for all of us. And then lastly, just want to update on the building. We've got an issue going on currently with the fire alarm system. We are working on it. The contractor from Liberty Alarms is getting back to us this week. So everything with that will hopefully be ironed out in the next week or two. Nothing of an urgent matter. It just sounds like there's something going on with the circuit board here in-house. He stated that since we're about 20 years in now, since the building was remodeled, that obviously issues start to arise and nothing out of the ordinary, but we are working on that as well. So I'll keep Bill in the loop as well, so that will keep all of us safe here at the building. That's it, unless anybody has any questions.
Okay. Police Commission report, John Law.
Yeah, Police Commission met for the first time with our new police chief on February 3rd, 8:30 in the morning. One of the things we did discuss was whether we needed to move that time to a little more open time for citizens. So we're investigating whether we'll move that thing. I think we talked about maybe going to like a four o'clock on a Thursday next time instead of being so early in the morning. So if anybody else wants to attend, make it a leisure for them. Basically, Chief Swistick covered most of what, I've forgotten my notes here. He did get his contracts ironed out with Dunland and Michiana, so they're both on board. And he's doing a great job of reporting to them. He talked a little bit at the meeting about the security upgrades to the town. That's on the agenda. So I'm not going to belabor that right now, but we'll talk about that in a little while. He talked about his first month, some of the communication going back and forth. He feels like he's been real successful. And I think I'm getting that same vibe from everybody that I've spoken to. He talked a little bit about the law enforcement training requirements for the policemen and the fact that he's reorganizing that a little bit. And everybody's actually scheduled out for the year for a lot of new training. The golf course, golf cart ordinance will be spoken about later. We won't spend time on that. And the vehicle updates, we've already talked about, as well as the 30-day rental and the ammunition shortage. So essentially, that's all the commission report for now.
Okay. Any questions? Volunteer Fire Department report, John.
I need this thing big enough to see. We had kind of a slow month in January. We had no fire calls thankfully in January, which was nice. We had 10 medical calls. Respiratory, we had a couple of injuries, and five sick person calls, and then two liposysis. For a total of two. Our average response for medical calls, obviously the fire cause isn't relevant, but the medical cause is about four, right at four minutes. And that's the end of the fire report.
Okay, and Fire Commission report.
Essentially, the Fire Commission has not met. We did, we're going to speak about it a little bit later tonight, but the officers for the Fire Department came up with a revised contract. We're going to speak about that on an agenda item a little bit farther down here on our agenda this evening. So I won't belabor that one as well. So we'll speak about that a little bit later.
Okay, Street Department, Tom Dolph.
I'm not sure if time is here tonight. Let me see if I can find his number. Dr. Lemay, they may be out plowing. I passed a couple of our plows when I was out driving around tonight.
Okay.
We're probably on the road. We've got current snowfall coming down.
Okay. I can speak to that a little bit, Bob. So we, the Street Department is in the middle of their season. So we haven't wanted to hold them up for meetings too much. But we did have some conversation, Tom and I, about a couple of things. One was the tree ordinance. And again, that's on our agenda a little bit later, so we can talk about that then. We did review that together, Tom and I. And I'll have some comments about that when we get to that item on our agenda. But in terms of time, we were at the throes of trying to itemize, and actually it's been a month-long effort, we're going to itemize all of his equipment in favor of a capital plan for the whole town, so that we can get some dates and years and serial numbers and that sort of thing. Maybe get some quotes on some of the things that he's worried about. And then we'll come to the council with kind of a five-year, 10-year plan for replacement on all of his capital equipment, rolling stock and that sort of thing, like the plows and all that. So he's in the throes of that, and we'll have that for the council within a month or so.
Okay. Park Board, John Coker.
Yes, Anita or Kendra, if you want to chime in, go ahead. But I'll give what I've made some notes on. A meeting, Park Board met on January 26th at 6 o'clock in the evening. Couple of the items that were discussed was the Beach Garden Club doing some educational programs, opportunity for master gardeners, tree at the tennis courts, stump to remain for the grinder, garden club project. And they're widening, some talk about widening some paths in the parks. Pickle board, that rehab is sort of installed right now. Toters, report that all the toddlers have been removed in the enclosures. Notices to be put out, see what suggestions are for for the stops, like benches, this sort of thing, new signage. Metal stairs at Stop 20 are needed. About a $10,000 cost for metal stairs. BMF to construct them, building permit to be applied for. And the cottonwood trees at Stop 16, they've been inspected and the inspector deemed them safe. And budget for 2021 has been approved, $164,000. Comment was made about the town having that's 100th anniversary this year. And who is going to step forward to kind of help out on that? The Town Council wants to take the lead, or is it Park Board, or Civic, or who? But anyway, that's something that ought to be thought about because that's sort of neat that we've been around for 100 years. So that's the end of my report, unless Anita or Kendra has anything to add.
I'll just chime in real quick, if you don't mind. I just wanted to elaborate. John said the exploration of widening the paths. And just to expand on that a little bit, what we're looking at doing is taking advantage of the great space we have between the community center and the tennis courts and all the area that we have that, we already have some paths that stop and start. And, you know, we're good at one time and maybe have deteriorated or whatever. But maybe making those a little bit wider and more smoother so that kids can safely, you know, rollerbraid or whatever. And walkers can also, instead of just doing loops around the community center indoors when the weather is nicer, for those who don't want to go out on the roads or whatnot, they can do a quarter-mile loop or, you know, whatever we determine around those paths. So we're, just expand on that. Like I said, that's what we're trying to do. Open up those paths a little bit wider, maybe for like two people side by side. And then also just make a kind of a safe little environment within our property zone where people can, obviously not bike or anything, but walk, run, or have kids tricycles and things like that. And again, give people that do the walking around the community center an option to walk outside as well. So that's just the explanation on that. That's it.
Okay, any questions? Community Center report, John.
Okay, I've been reported to me by Joy that she's notified us that all the community center volunteers will all be vaccinated by the end of the month. So they'll be able to begin resuming their regularly scheduled meeting time for the first Monday in March. They will be using masks and social distancing, of course. They want to discuss a plan to resume cleaning of the building, as well as a building reopening plan. They were told not to spend any money while the building was shut down. But when given the green light, they want to be ready to resume ongoing projects, such as painting, masonry repair, Jim Diner's office lights, Scotters, cooling tower, whatever needs to be done. So they're ready to get started again soon as they get the vaccination, and vaccination's in full force. And hopefully things will calm down a little bit. So let's keep our fingers crossed.
Any questions? Water Board, Mary Lou.
The Water Board met on January 25th. We are one of the old business. We're working on the billing that you'll get for the storm sewer, the stormwater thing. So Lynn is working on that with the Civic Association. So we can get all that information on there to start having people pay for the stormwater. We were working on the new business, working on the job descriptions. And we did a, we have had a few people that have, that we asked to remove light fees, and the board did approve that. Other than that, our next meeting is February 22nd at 9:00 a.m. on Zoom.
Great. Any questions? Bill, Budget and Finance?
Budget and Finance met on Tuesday instead of Wednesday, January 12th. And we had a rather extensive meeting. Pete provided some very good information on all of the funds and responded to questions that we have. There's an explanation of what we have remaining in the general obligation bond fund, which is over $950,000. But that will be dragged down as we start to spend on that. We talked a little bit about the CCMG fund. We still have $550,000 left in the fund that had to be encumbered because we haven't finished the billing. So there is probably going to be another tug of, and that approval that we, that we made at the end of the, for the for the funding has, also has to be encumbered because most of those funds, those the Rainy Day and the CCIF and the Settage Fund, all will need to be, all will be pushed forward, but we didn't spend any of that money. So that money will be spent. We, we have, and we have a meeting, so we have the, this meeting will be on Wednesday at 8:30 this week. And I will send out some material on some of the loans that we have tomorrow so the, so the members can review those, the expenditure that we still have to, still have to go. They have in some things that Mark has identified that maybe didn't get put into the budget. So we're going to have, besides the ammunition, and so we've got, you know, continuing costs for things like the police cameras and that. So we need to, we just need to review that. But we're in very good shape. We have not received any of the, of the funding from the coastal grants. But according to the, Katie Hobgood has sent email that approvals have been made and 85%, in other words, about $85,000 will be coming to us soon. And then they will withhold the final $15,000 till Save the Dunes gives them the final blessing on that. But there is no more expense that I know of coming out, coming for Stop 24.
Good deal. Any questions? Human Resources, Bill.
We, we have, we got a final version of the, of the timesheet, which we're working on. And I believe that Mark Swistick gave us a blessing in terms of, because he has the most players to use the. And the problem that we've got with the timesheet is we're trying to merge an eight-hour day with a 12-hour day. And the police have seven 12-hour days in a two-week period. And the other employees have regular five, eight-hour days in a, in a one-week period. So, but we think we're, we're there with that. And we've got the rest of the the job descriptions all in place now. So we will need to work on, we've talked about having a plan for each of the supervisors to approach their, their employees with plans for, for education and development that they may have. And then the individual, Water Board with Greg, Street Department with Tom, and the Police Commission with anything that Mark feels that he needs. Going forward, we should be able to do that. And I'll work with Deanna for any development that she's got. That's it.
Any questions?
Just to add to that, since I'm on the committee, what we decided that is in April and October, well, April, I talked to Tom, or I talked to Greg today and told him what we were interested, that we called Employee Development, and something that they might be interested, Austons will be more or less taking the classes to get certified for the water certification. And I tried to give them some examples. I told him no cooking classes or, you know, just some humor. And he's like, oh, okay. Well, let me think about that. Because he said, I see some things that I might be interested. And I said, we're interested in employee development. And so we will have them, I will report back to the council in April and October. I haven't had a chance to talk to Tom Dolph yet because I like to do that in person so they understand why we're doing that. And I'm, there was something else we did, Bill, that I was trying to think of that we got covered. And so other than that, the Human Resource Committee will meet again the first Monday, the first Thursday in March.
Okay. Building Commission, there was no meeting because of the calendar. Next meeting will be this Friday, 2:12. BCA, the same thing, no meeting since our last Town Council meeting. However, they will be meeting tomorrow. That's 2:09. And that's at 7 o'clock.
Okay.
Advisory Plan Commission.
You're meeting 2:22, right?
2:22, yes. Well, that's the next meeting. But Advisory Plan Commission did have a meeting since our last Town Council meeting. They discussed the maximum building size, the proposed amendments, and restatement of the shoreline protection ordinance, solar ordinance, and the right-of-way ordinance. And again, that next meeting is 2:22. Okay, Bill. Building Permit Revenue Report.
All right, under the lights. Building Permit Revenue Report for January 2021, nine permits issued, $191,000 in 191,070. And town revenue of $2,633. Three electrical permits issued in January totaling $346, with town revenue of $34.60. One street cut permit, revenue of $100. January legal expenses paid were $4,668.75 to Braji, Nelson, and James. I would entertain a motion to approve the reports and the building permit revenue, or the revenue reports.
So moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, good. Okay. Unfinished business. Town's Executive Order Update. My recommendation would be to not change anything in terms of our executive order at this point. While we've seen a little bit of a decrease in hospitalization rate, I know for a fact that we've continued to have new cases in Long Beach. I don't think we should relax things at this point. I think things are moving in the right direction, but we're not there yet. So that would be my motion to make no change.
So, Bob, just to clear that up, we'd still have the town hall shut down, but the old school could still be open as long as there were masks.
With the, with the limitation, we have the gym closed, but the Y courses open. And I think the yoga lady is, is able to go. And Jim Diner is still able to see clients in his office. But I, yeah, I wouldn't make any other changes. That'd be my recommendation. So there's a motion. Okay, there's a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay. Lake Shore Drive Sewer Update. I don't believe there's anything new there. We're basically waiting for Michigan City. But I think at this point, we're new there. We're basically waiting for Michigan City. But I think at this point, we're on schedule. And the plan, I think, is to begin construction on that sewer in fall of 2021. Is that correct?
Correct.
Good deal. Okay. Stop 24 update. I think that construction is all finished at this point. We're waiting for the money from the coastal, coastal people. Yeah. And I think the only thing we have to do is we need to have a opening educational thing for that to qualify again to get that last $15,000. John, did you have something more to say?
Yeah, the, the lady from the Save the Dunes and I have had a little bit of conversation. As soon as she can get the, the coastal people involved, which should happen sometime as the weather warms, we'll schedule the public awareness campaign items that they want to see before they release that last 15% that Bill was talking about. So that should happen within the next 45 to 60 days, I hope. And then that'll be kind of an ongoing process. But as soon as we, you know, set it up, then the money will get released and we'll be all set. I, I would like to say sometime in the future, I'd like to, there's still a bunch of concrete that was thrown over the edge over the years on the hillside of that area. And we'd like to get that out of there at some time in the future and dress it up with a little more soil. So we always kind of knew we were going to keep that out of the project when we tried to keep the magnitude down. But that's for a future, future item when we, when we're a little bit more flush. And it won't take a lot of money, but it'll be something we'd like to do to dress. You'll see when you get down there after it warms up, that hillside still needs a little help.
You're talking about the lakeside of Lake Shore Drive, but over the hill, over the bank, kind of?
Yeah, they, it was, it was like a $60,000 ad. We decided not to take that alternate. But we, I know we can get it done for a lot less than that. It's just something we have for the future. We kind of planned for it when we adjusted to where the platform is. And then, and then we'll throw some fill over and then put some more doom grass in there. It'll just beautify whole area. It, it looks really nice now, but that'll be the final capstone on the project at some point.
Okay. Stormwater Utility?
This one, Bob, this one, Bob, I, Deanna and I wanted that on the agenda because we, we did all the heavy lifting, but I, I don't know whether I have the template. So I'm not sure that I have the final, the final version. And maybe Chris has got that in his possession with the, with the changes that we made.
I, I am not sure, but I will.
Okay. Yeah, it's just something to look at that we, yeah.
Okay. Proposed Golf Cart Ordinance?
I think we had, there were just a couple of real slight language changes, right, Bill? In that last, at the last reading?
Yeah. I mean, we, we agreed and everybody agreed to it. But then I, you know, we didn't get the copies. So that's all I want. I just want to make sure that, and whether it's something that, you know, that Chris can send me and then we have to type it in or whatever, that's fine. But we, we just, I want to make sure that, because our version was the one that was massaged just slightly.
And then I think Mary Lou was working on with the water guys about getting that on the invoice for potentially, Mary Lou, I can't remember whether we said we might be able to get that on for the end of February for the water bills or?
We're trying to get it on for the end of February. What we're doing is the Waterboard has, is supposed to have a public meeting on some other things. So we didn't, we want to get a letter out. We want Bill and you to, to send a letter in the Beecher and everything to explain to people so they're not shocked. And then to get a letter and then we'll have it on there. And Lynn's working on it. I'll check with her tomorrow.
Are we shooting for the February bills or the March bills?
I think you're shooting for the March bills because we still need, we don't, we want the stormwater on there and then we need the fire protection charge, but we haven't had that public meeting. And we thought we shouldn't nickel and dime people and have it all at once. So they understood what it was.
When you say public meeting, are you talking about a hearing?
Yes, it will be with Carl Sender and he will explain why we need to do that.
This is just, this is for a small hydrant charge?
Yeah, for the fire protection charge. And we're also working on explaining to people what that is.
So this is February. So are we going to get that, what's our timeframe on that, Bill?
I'm assuming, I can check and check with Laurel. I'm assuming we're, it'll be on the March bill.
Okay.
Okay.
We need to schedule a public hearing?
I, I thought, I need to check with Rick Blank and Laurel. And yes, I will. And I will get, Bob Lemay, I'll get back to you.
Okay. Now let me know and we can do it.
And just to clarify, Bill, I do, I, I sent out a red line version, but I'll send the final version just because I would just prove that was.
Yeah.
Okay. Now the proposed golf cart ordinance. So we've all gotten some email feedback on this. I've got my copy. Does everybody have a copy of that?
Yeah, I, I was, that's what I ran. Hold on.
Okay.
Okay, I'm back.
Okay. So I, I just kind of went through it and saw a few things that kind of jumped out at me. Golf cart definition, golf cart means a four wheel motor vehicle originally and specifically intended constructed to transport one or more individuals. I would like to add for the purpose of playing golf, just because otherwise you could be talking about a go-kart. Does that sound okay to everybody?
Well, I, Bob, I thought they could use it. Now I think the ruling is that you have to, a lot of people aren't, they carry around a set of clubs and they're not really golfers. But I thought we were okaying that people could have golf carts as long as they were ready.
Yes. Yeah. The, the idea is constructed for the purpose of playing golf.
Okay.
That's, that's, that's the differentiation between that and a go-kart.
Okay.
So that's one. And then I guess we might as well just go right to this registration fee. Right now we have on here $150. There's been some thoughts about that. Mary Lou, I think you had checked on some neighboring communities to see what?
I did. I checked on Grand Beach. I checked on Ogden Dunes. I checked on Chesterton and Grand Beach. So the one in, and then I checked on Michiana. So Grand Beach is, theirs is as much high, is higher because that goes to help support the, the country club there.
Right.
And so they have some different variations. Like before, May 1st is $240, I think if they're a resident. Non-resident is 300. Chesterton, I, they did get back to me. I wasn't prepared for that. Ogden Dunes is $35. And I did talk to the police department there. And so, and I think Michiana's $10. So I, the, the biggest question I've had from residents is where, what are we going to do with this money? I, personally, I feel that's exorbitant, the, the cost, the price. But I like the idea of, I like the ordinance of, I, I don't like to see young children driving golf carts. And I like that they're registered so we know who's got it and, you know, who doesn't. But I think that's a really high charge. And, you know, the country club offered to help us with registration and everything if it was going to be a reasonable fee. And now they've kind of, they've said they're not interested. And, and so I, I think the $150 is too exorbitant.
Well, I, I'd just like to chime in and say, you know, I agree with all that. And I also think 150 is a little on the high side. I like to see it somewhere around the $50 range. I'm, I've also been contacted by a lot of people. And it's my understanding if, if, unless the fee gets exorbitant, the country club's not going to want to be registering their 150 golf carts. And that burden would be put on the town. And, you know, I, I think if this ordinance passes, you'll not only have 150 golfers from the country club be registering, but I'm anticipating probably another 75 to 100 plus just regular residents having golf carts in town. And, and so the town will have to register those. I mean, the country club's certainly not going to register the non-golfers. But, you know, I think to start out, I think a reasonable fee of $50 isn't going to break anybody and it's not excessive, but it will cover costs to maintain it. And that money's going to be used for police education or a lot of different areas that the town could designate for. It could be used for highway beautification or who knows what, anything.
My understanding from Mr. Hogan's letter was that if the fee was $50, that the country club would register their members. Is that correct, Brian?
Got to speak it.
Correct.
That was correct?
That, that is correct. If $50 or less, the club will help with the billing and collection of the fee as well as providing a town. We talked to Chief Swistick, the information that would be wanted, we've heard is a local address and contact number for the owner as well as their proof of insurance. So we'll provide that in the yearly database. And it would sync up with a numbered sticker on each car.
And then the town would have to register the golf carts that are not affiliated with the country club. And I think the fee would have to be, I, I, it doesn't seem right to me that the fee should be any different for non-country club affiliated carts.
Yeah.
Right, be uniform.
Can I make one comment, Bob? It's not that the country club's going to register them. They're just going to do the, the paperwork on their members and provide it to the town so that the town still issues the stickers for all the carts, including the country club carts. That's my understanding unless Brian's got a correction there. Their, their thought was they would do the administration of their members, but then they provide the funds and the information to the town.
Right. Again, I think we could speak to this as we have an ordinance to implement. But if there was a way that the town gave the club a set number of stickers that were each labeled with an individual number, the club could, every year in June, provide the town with a check for each of the stickers that we've given out. And you would have the, yeah, registration info with, with each one of those. So we'd, we'd like to keep it, you know, one, one stop shop for everybody to get it done for the ease.
Well, and Bob, I want to speak for the people that work in the town and I'm in there frequently. And I, Deanna doesn't need one more thing on her plate.
Yep.
We have a great person that's like the administrative dispatcher that works for Mark, but she's busy. So that would be a huge help. And I know the country club would be in compliance. I know they would help us.
Dr. Lemay, I, I would recommend that the police department take on the burden of registering the remaining residents from the town rather than a clerk's office. I'll be burdened with that. So Renee, Renee and I have already talked, and Renee's on board that we can handle the registration of the remaining carts.
All right. So do I hear a motion to go with $50?
I make the motion.
Do I hear a second? All favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? Okay. Just, just continue to go through this. I think we need to make sure on the bottom of the paragraph on registration fee that the three inch stickers need to be permanently affixed. We don't want people just slipping a sticker on one with a Velcro and then putting it on another golf cart. So I think permanently affixed would be a good addition to the language of that.
Not on their windshield like the, like the, like in Michigan City so they can scrape it off each year?
Mark, where would you suggest?
Because I don't want a sticker on the paint on my car.
We, we talked about placing it on the front of the golf cart, either on the windshield or on the front of the cart where it's visible to, you know, any approaching vehicle. And then I would recommend when we go to purchase the stickers that we pick out like a neon color, something that's going to stick out. And then every year we'll change the color as well. I just don't think we need a sticker on the left and right side. If we issue out two stickers, my other fear is if we give two out, they may try and use that on two different carts. So I would prefer one sticker per cart. That's just my opinion.
Sounds good. And Mark, where do you get a slow moving vehicle emblem display? What, what's that all about?
Yep, Siwana.
It's similarly, you see on farm vehicles and that's the orange triangular, slow moving vehicle. I'm sure you could probably go on Amazon, purchase it, probably even maybe a local Kableens or anything like that. So, but they are available out there.
Do we need those on there?
Well, if you go to number C on section four, it's, you can do that or flashing light.
Yeah. Either, I think either or would be sufficient.
Okay.
I would like that paragraph. I'd like to not only have that, but also equip the golf carts with taillights. Take out the wording unless the vehicle is. And so you'd have a vehicle emblem and/or red or amber flashing light and equipped with taillights. Then if you drive it at nighttime, you have to have the headlight, taillights and turn signals, as I understand, right, Chief?
Correct, yes.
If you have a slow moving vehicle sticker on the car, that's fine and dandy, but the car can be coming behind you. Not, we really see that that often. And, but if you have the brake lights, you might be able to stop, avoid hitting it. And that's what, that's what concerns me is the, as an accident standpoint of this. I think you're going to have a lot more golf carts out on the road. And, you know, hopefully everybody is careful when they are driving the golf carts and driving their vehicles.
But John, are you talking brake lights or, or taillights? Those are two different?
Taillights, I'm sorry, taillights. But usually, well, I don't know how they're hooked up, but you, you'd want them on, turned on when you drive the cart.
Do most golf carts, most golf carts don't have taillights. So that would be a bit of an ask of everybody to put taillights on golf carts, right?
Well, if we're saying that golf carts are a motor vehicle, but they don't have to abide by Indiana motor vehicle laws, then, you know, so be it. But then I think that, that's what I'm concerned with is the liability to the town. I mean, we're proving a non-approved vehicle on our public highways, public roadways. And so, you know, as long as nothing happens, it's not a big deal. But all you need is one good accident and then you're going to wonder why.
Yeah. And this, the current conversation too is kind of where, and I know Chief Swistick has shared what the county has done, but the county has struggled with this in the past as to ultimately, what do you do? Because if you want them on the roads and, and they're operating like a vehicle, do you make them comply with the code?
How about if we say, if you don't have taillights, you can't be out after sunset?
Perfect.
Would that work?
Ask, ask Brian if, do most golf carts have taillights or no? I don't know.
Don't think so.
Do they? Is he still here?
Yeah, he's there.
Yeah, maybe.
I'm here. There's newer ones, but I don't want to speak to the 150 carts that we mentioned.
Yeah. My guess is most don't. But if we did limit them just to after sunrise and before sunset, that might help alleviate that problem. And if you're going to be out after sunset, you better have the taillights. Chief, does that work?
Yes. If they're, if they're going to be out in the, the dark hours, they definitely have to have turn signals, taillights, headlights, just like a normal motor vehicle. Otherwise, a normal golf cart can only be operated during daylight hours.
Okay. So I guess we need to add that language.
Yeah, the turn signals are going to be more, if anybody had to retrofit a golf cart, it would be turn signals that prompt it much more than headlights or taillights and brake lights would.
Yeah. Okay. John, are you happy with just dusk and dawn?
Well, I, I'm making everyone happy or not, but if everybody's happy with that, I'll be happy. I, I'm just concerned about the safety, that's all. And I. I I'm just concerned about the safety, that's all. And I
Okay, and then, um, and D, um, under section four, uh, compliance with traffic law and town ordinances. I just want to be clear. I've never seen a golf cart with seat belts. We don't want to insist on that. However, I do think we need to make sure that the open container law has to be followed. Anybody driving with a beer or some other alcoholic beverage that's opened is in violation.
That's a state law.
Yeah, well, and I think we talk about, if you talks there about follow state law, but state law does talk about requiring seat belts. And I think we we, I think it's gonna be kind of tough to put seat belts on every golf cart.
Child restraints are another issue.
Yeah, and I think that's another thing. If you don't have seat belts, you can't put in child restraints. Hopefully, people will have the good sense not to be driving around golf carts with babies in their arms.
Well, I can tell you they don't because they go there. Mark, what was your thought on that? I thought we discussed that.
We we did. By state law, a child that is under the age of eight, so seven and under, has to either be in a booster seat or a child safety seat. So my question to everybody was, do we want to allow children under the age of eight on the golf carts? Or are we going to prohibit that? As we've seen, you know, grandparents, parents are going down, you know, Lake Shore Drive, holding an infant or a one-year-old and that. So I don't know if we want to put that into the ordinance. Something to think about when it comes to the safety aspect. That's one of my fears of being a parent. Obviously, I'm very concerned with the safety of children. So just want to throw it out for discussion.
Uh, Bob, one of my sources told me that if you have a street legal golf cart, it does have seat belts.
Yeah, but there just aren't very many of those.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, does that citation that we have in the ordinance as it's written, Mark, then allow you guys to enforce that child restraint age? It cites the
I see under section D you're talking about, John?
Yeah.
And we're talks about Title IX under nine twenty-one and that. I guess a question to throw out to Chris Willoughby. Chris, what's your thoughts on when we look at traffic infractions? And using a golf cart as the example, as the motor vehicle citing, you know, for, or to be nine nineteen eighteen-two or whatever for child restraint, what's your thoughts on that?
I think that anything that isn't compliant, so that's that's the issue. I think generally the site to it and John Wall, I will verify because I presume you guys are gonna want a clean copy at some point to to look with all these changes. I I will work with Mark to make sure the sites, but I think that as cited, you guys have the ability to cite for anything that's not in accordance with the code. And if that's your intention, I don't think that you need to make this a wordy or lengthy ordinance that adds all of those things, but everybody's subject to and needs needs to be aware of that.
I think when we publish the ordinance, I think we need to have the citations in there that are adequate for Mark to enforce it uniformly.
I think that will be fine. I think educating the public too that, you know, that regular traffic laws apply to these and maybe you want to take the step, maybe you don't. Maybe you just say not under a certain age and then then there's some discretion and they're subject to it. So maybe that, you know, as John Coker has said, and maybe it's the attorney at him, there isn't any one factor that's gonna make the town liable, but if anything goes wrong, the town's gonna have to answer, right? And so we want to make sure that we're following and at the same time being mindful and not making making golf carts Lamborghinis either, right? So I I think that working with Mark, making sure the sites that are general, if that's your pleasure, but the only way to address that otherwise, just to to make it clear to the public is put an age restriction that I don't know if that, if you want to or not. The law is clear, so.
I think as long as you've got the state code citation in there the way you want it, then we'll just, as we release this ordinance, we'll just have to make it clear, you know, that there are things in state code and then list them and tell everybody that, you know, you've got to comply with state code. We can put the citations on the public announcement and then we can give them a list of half a dozen things that were been enforced.
Yeah, and I think just like open containers, there's no difference, right? That's the law. So you don't need to cite those things specifically and their child seats are probably the same thing.
The simple explanation is the same rules and laws apply to a golf cart that apply to your motor vehicle when you're operating that. You're gonna have to be a licensed operator, sixteen years of age or older, with a valid Indiana or another state, you know, driver's license. And that's a way I think that we'll sell it to the town is it's the same rules that apply to your motor vehicle.
Except we're saying no seat belts required. So maybe we should say no seat belts required and nobody under the age of eight. Unless they're belted in. Well, and actually they have to be in a child safety thing, you said.
I don't think you want to say those things. We can't change state law, right? The state law is the minimum. So we can't.
We're not gonna enforce seat belts, right?
I don't think that you can say that the the traffic laws are the traffic laws. So I I think that that the the cart owners and the drivers will operate and, yeah.
Yeah, they operate at their own peril.
Okay.
I don't think you need to point it out, but we cannot, you know, it's always the state code is the minimum. We can make things more stringent. We can't make them less.
Okay.
Oh, Bob, I have a question for Mark. If we, if I have a street legal golf cart, then I won't need a sticker because I have license plates, right?
Wrong.
It was just a question, John.
If it's plated through the Indiana Bureau of Motor Vehicles, then it would be no different than any other vehicle. It would be classified as a motor vehicle. It would be street legal. So I would say you would not need to have have it registered with the town.
Thank you. I've
Still probably I have to register it though.
Yeah, I was gonna say, or we change it to to say, I guess, unless properly registered and plated under the definition, because if we go back, then we're
Yeah, by definition.
Yeah, that's a little bit too complicated. I don't think that's gonna happen.
So if I have a street legal golf cart, which I don't have, I don't have to have a sticker, right?
I don't think that's what it says right now. So I guess the issue is what you want it to be.
I just, I just want to know for reference.
Right now, it says that you'd need one for a golf cart.
Yeah, it says registration is needed for golf carts. So it doesn't really make the distinction about street legal. So I think you probably do need to register.
Okay, I just want to make
Yeah, street legal or not, I mean, by definition, the the plates would just mean you can tool around wherever you want.
The problem, I think, Mayor, if we if we try to exclude street legal ones, then everybody that hasn't got one yet but sees that we have an ordinance in place, will bump it up and buy a street legal one. And I don't think that's really what we wanted to encourage. I I am with you.
I think they're probably gonna run into some problems when they try to do them, have to show that they're compliant. So I don't think that is even the issue.
I could for a second because Mary Lou's question has been asked of us. And I think, Chris, this is probably to you and the chief. But I don't know if there's a term "street legal golf cart" so much as these plated carts are now classified as low-speed, energy-efficient vehicles. And that's
About green, green.
Now they're given a license plate from the state. So I think the owners there would say once they do that, they've transcended it, not a golf cart.
I don't think you could take those vehicles, those those golf carts out on the state highway.
I think there's a, I think they could go anywhere twenty-five and under, but
Yeah, I mean, you're not gonna take them out on a fifty-five mile an hour road.
So what you're saying is we're including in our definition of golf carts a motorized vehicle that is street legal.
And to your, to your point, that there's a pretty hefty ask that these owners are paying, it would be far above the fifty dollars. So I wouldn't be too concerned about everybody running to register with the state instead of the town.
And it doesn't matter, still a slow-moving vehicle as defined and it still has to be registered as rid. I don't think there's anything that takes it out as written. If you want to accept them out, then probably should point that out. But I I agree with Brian. I don't, I think those that might want to go that angle are gonna find that it's much more expensive than the fifty bucks.
Well, how many, how many ballpark? Because I don't know, maybe Brian.
In practice where we see it, um, a few people who come from neighboring towns where golf carts aren't legal, yeah, Michigan City, Charon Beach was enforcing some traffic citations against carts and people there went the extra step to get their carts, yeah, registered with the state as slow-moving vehicles.
Okay.
So I'm still confused. What are we doing? Are they getting registered or not?
I would think they still need to be registered.
I agree.
I just don't think we want the police to have to make that distinction every time they see a golf cart. So that would be my motion to say, yeah, they need to be registered.
They do see the license plate prominently. That that's the difference that they could
That's true.
And I do think then it is, yeah. It becomes another vehicle that I don't know how you tax it if you're not taxing other cars with license plates.
This isn't a tax, Brian. It's a, it's a
A fee.
User fee, yeah.
I'll second the motion, Bob.
All right. So right now, the motion is to to require street legal golf carts to register. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Mike, that was an aye?
Aye, yes.
Just to be thorough, opposed?
Aye. Okay.
Four to one and one abstention?
Who was the one abstention?
John Coker, I believe.
No, I said aye.
Oh, you did? Okay, four to one then, okay. All right. I didn't have any other changes to this ordinance. Did anybody else have anything they thought ought to be changed?
Uh, Mark, go ahead. You you speak to it.
I just want to give Chris an add under the, probably under the penalty section, some language that the towing of the golf cart for any of the, any violations at any time is subject to towing at the owner's expense to something of that nature. I want to talk about impoundment. So it's clear that on any given infraction for not, even if it's the first, second, third violation, it's so egregious that we can just go ahead and impound it. If we catch, you know, a ten-year-old with five kids on it going down Lake Shore Drive, we may land up impounding it and holding it until, you know, the parents can get it out of the impound. So I just want to put some language in there, letting everybody know that it is subject to impoundment.
What page did you add on, Mark?
Uh, three.
Okay.
We have to add like under the fines somewhere in there, maybe have Chris just add a subsection talking about impoundment. Just to make it, just to make everybody aware that they're, they are responsible for the entire cost. So.
And, um, Chris, you've seen all those changes? You good with that?
I've been taking notes during this, yes.
Wonderful. Okay, so you can maybe put us together a redline version, send it out, and maybe we can get this done at the next meeting?
I will be ready.
Sounds good. Cool. Any other comments on the golf cart ordinance?
Thank you to Chief and Councilman Wall and all of you for considering this, responding and the the extra time we took to collaborate. I think it's gonna make everybody safer.
Okay.
You're welcome.
The tree ordinance, the national, I'm sorry, the National Resource Committee didn't have a meeting. They were gonna do some work on this, but John, have you been talking to them?
Uh, yeah, so we, I made some suggestions, it might have been two meetings ago, and I told those Dr. Uhas and that group that we were going to have some conversation with Tom Dahl. And we've had some conversation with Tom and he and I pounded through the ordinance itself and we came up with some suggestions. There's some language in there that we're not very happy with and some language we'd like to add. But what I might suggest, there's probably six or seven of those types of issues. I don't know if Dr. Uhas is on this evening, but I think we should have a little workshop with them. You know, as soon as we can schedule it. We didn't want to press Tom during snow season, but it's not been a real bad winter. So he's willing to meet sometime in the next, you know, thirty to forty-five days if they're available. So if they are on, I'd encourage them, you know, to pipe in, but we'd like to meet with them for a little workshop. If the whole council wants to be involved, that's fine. Or or Tom and I can handle it, either way.
Yeah, I think that we can, we're probably limited to two of us. Well, I, Chris, are we limited to?
If you have a workshop, you just have to put a notice out there.
Okay. Well, why don't we schedule a workshop with them and try and get it done then?
At least, you know, same same as everything else, right? Forty-eight hours at least in that code.
Okay. Resources. Okay. Next is Long Beach Volunteer Fire Department Agreement. I guess my my thought would be maybe we need to schedule an executive session to try and hammer out an agreement.
We can do that in a workshop too, I suppose.
Would that be done at a workshop also?
I don't know if we can even do an executive session.
It's probably not one that's falls under the categories of things you can have an exec session for, but a workshop, if you want to have a work meeting.
Okay.
I'd like to schedule it tonight so we don't lose track of it if everybody's available or we can do that. Can we set a meeting date so we don't lose track of this thing?
I've got my calendar right here. What works for you, John?
I mean, I'm not suggesting it's gotta be in the next week, but how do people look? The third week in February or the fourth week in February? Oh, Mike, I know you're, we can do it on Zoom.
Yes, absolutely. In fact, we need to do it on Zoom.
Yeah. Like, when are you coming back? Or you, or you, can you do it from out there?
We're we're not, we're extending now, so we're gonna be here through the month of March. So I'm good the week of the twenty-second.
Brian here. John's around. Mayor, how do you look?
What day did you say?
The week of the twenty-second.
Okay, we have an APC meeting that night, but other than that, that week.
That's on the Monday. Any day but Monday.
Right.
Okay, so do you want to go Wednesday, the twenty-fourth?
Sure.
So maybe Deanna and Bill could get the note out on that and they could get on the website.
I'll do that on Zoom tonight. Seven P M?
John, you call the shots on the time. I'm good anytime.
Good times.
Right, like seven o'clock at night, five, five again, I don't care.
Okay.
I think five's great.
Five. Five, five central time.
Okay.
Okay.
Bob, can you put a Zoom out or do you want me to?
I can do it.
So two twenty-four, seven P M?
Five P M.
Oh, five, okay.
I will get it on Zoom after this meeting.
Thanks, everybody.
You're welcome. Hey, Bob?
Yep.
I had a text from somebody and they want to know, are we going to ask motorized scooters to be registered?
Motorized scooters. This ordinance really refers to golf carts. Mark, are scooters having to be, what what's the deal with people riding scooters on our roads? What's the state saying?
Uh, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, but they can be on the roadways as long as they follow the flow of traffic, follow the traffic laws. Because they're just, laws are not obstructing anything. There's nothing I can think of that jumps out at me. Chris?
Sorry, I'm trying. I think that's the case, but I will also make sure that if something needs to be addressed. It's not part of this golf cart ordinance, but I will give you that answer.
You check it out.
But they're not allowed to carry golf clubs on their scooter.
Think that'd be a little difficult.
I used to ride a bicycle carrying my golf clubs when I was a kid.
What if they pull a little trailer behind them? I don't know.
Maybe that'd be okay. Let's let's not go there. Let's not give anybody any ideas. Okay, CCMG application. Bill, I thought we were done with that, aren't we?
Okay, we authorized the House Engineering to go ahead and they did put an application in for us at the end of January. So we'll, we won't know for a little while whether or not the Indiana Department of Transportation will award us any monies. Once we get the award, then we have to decide how much we want to try to spend. And then we can limit it down to whatever, we can throttle it down wherever we want. But right now, the application has been made. I will say that we did reduce the scope considerably because, you know, You know, traditionally, we've been trying to do drainage structures and do, you know. More significant repairs on the roads, but that takes a little more time on engineering. And because we dragged our feet and didn't allow them to get started early enough in the year. You know, the budget finance guys directed me to tell them not to get started until. End of December, so we we put. Hoss in kind of a tight spot. They didn't have, they did not have enough time to do wholesale engineering on drainage work. So what we did was we went back and. Took the list of streets and called it down to streets that only needed resurfacing. So the the application now is for less funds in general overall. It's somewhere around, I think, six hundred thousand or so. Their engineering costs will be less than what we originally budgeted, which should help Bill with his numbers. And we'll see whether we get any award this year.
Good deal. Okay.
By the way, Hidden Hills Trail is a street. Street down doesn't require any drains.
Well, it's not just drainage, Bill. What happens is what we're going to wind up doing this time because they didn't have time to. Do cores in the pavement and really analyze pavement structures. We're going to do a lot of resurfacing with two inches, which. You know, it's it's like painting a house. You're going to get a lift of paint on it, but you're not going to fix the wood underneath. So. I would have preferred if we could have got this going back in October when we first wanted to. We would have had a more substantial street program put together, but this will be beneficial. Don't get me wrong, but. It's much better if you can analyze the streets. You know, that are on the list. We've got them on the on the in that list already, but it would have been nice to do cores and do a little better job on it, but. We limited them because we waited so long to let him go ahead.
Great. Okay, new business. Council slash board appointments. Uh, at the last meeting, we appointed a number of people to boards. Uh, however, I. It's my mistake, but Park Board, Zach Neff's term had come up. I think that's a board that works really well together. Uh, I hate to mess up their chemistry and I'd like to nominate Zach. This is an appointment by the town council, so town council. Votes on that.
Would that be a four year term?
That would be a four year term.
Okay. I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, congratulations, Zach, if you're out there. Uh, Fire Commission. Now, these these next three are board positions. That are replacing Nick Meyer. Uh, on their boards. So the Fire Commission, that's a presidential appointment. And. That right now would have to either be Mike Johnstone or Mary Lou. So if either one of you would like to be on the Fire Commission, let me know and I will appoint you.
I'd be happy to do that.
Good, you're appointed. Congratulations.
Well, then that's three years, Bob.
Uh. I'm sorry, what was that? That was the. Fire Commission. Fire Commission is annual.
Oh, okay.
And that includes the Fire Chief, two members of the council appointed by the president. A member of the Fire Department and a member selected by the four commission members. So right now it's John Wall who's the chief. Uh, Tom Yampk is the. Appointment, presidential appointment on the Fire Department.
And then we have to appoint John Coker, don't we? Because if it's an annual thing.
Uh, yeah, I guess we could reappoint John Coker. I'll make that motion.
I second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then you guys, you four can get together and decide who your fifth should be. Next is the Police Advisory. Commission and the chief has appointed Bob Rose to that. Just want to announce that. Congratulations, Bob Rose. Thanks, chief.
How many? Is that three years?
Uh, let's see, Police Advisory, you're right. Police Advisory. Never does it say on here.
I'm looking, just a minute.
But that is Dan Moon, Zach Neff. And now Bob Rose.
Oh, it's Zach Neff, okay.
Zach Neff is the was the presidential appointment, apparently.
Okay, just a minute.
Yeah, my my list doesn't say how how long the term is.
Okay.
Dr. Lemay, if I may add something?
Yep.
I reached out to all our deputies and allowed them to have some input on this selection and the team selected Bob Rose. I personally spoke to. Mr. Rose last Friday. He's excited to assist. And I want to thank him for his volunteerism. We look forward to working with him.
Good. Okay.
Thank you, Bob.
And then the last one I have is the Advisory Plan Commission. Uh, again, Nick Meyer was on the Advisory Plan Commission needs to be replaced. That is a council appointment. And it needs to be a town council member. Uh, available for that position are John Wall, John Coker, or Mike Johnston.
I think Mike Johnson would be a good selection on there. Yet he's feeding on the fire right now.
Do I hear a second to that nomination?
I second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Is that a one year?
Uh, no, well, let me, I can tell you. That's the Advisory Plan Commission.
Oh, it's it's over in two oh two three.
Yeah, two oh two three, four year term, but he's he's replacing Nick Meyer, whose term ends in two oh two three.
Okay, perfect.
Yep. Okay. Uh, Bill, let's talk about council signatures.
Okay, um. Deanna and I, I mean, I think Chris will say that that we have plenty of leeway with. You know, with the with the governor saying how we can operate with these things. But it would be nice if we could have something and maybe Chris will. Will agree or disagree, but we were hoping that we could have something. Rather than have everybody come in because basically we need to find Nick Meyer to come in to sign all of these things. And leaving everything out. For, you know, for everybody to come in to try to sign and and get everything done just seems like. Like a like a wasted effort and I we were hoping that maybe we could agree. With a with an with a council motion. To have you just sign something and we could just drop. A signature page in there with the council. In other words, indicating that these. Minutes are that these these uh, check registers. And ordinances and resolutions have all been have all been passed. At a, you know, at a regular meeting and that we've just. We just, it would be a lot easier if we had we had you to sign something that we could. Copy and just drop in with each one of those things. I'm just concerned when we get. You know, when we get to the, you know, to the next audit. That even though we've approved them and the minutes are there, it just. It kind of short circuits a lot of lot of effort, but maybe you've got. You find that. Something that you don't like, Chris. Do you? That's the reason we thought is there a way.
Be able to get away with a little Chinese signatures, but let me verify. So I guess ultimately if the council's pleasure is to to. And we, my only concern is we're going to need to make sure in each of those for. That the council members, for instance, in the ordinance that got passed tonight. Every everybody's signature indicating by electronic signature. I mean, court documents, everything we have now is electronic signatures is not your answer. And a signature technically is anything. It could be a smiley face, frankly, if that's what. It could be a signature. So I I think that if you're inclined, I will verify that maybe we can. Go with electronic signatures and we can.
That would apply to if you vote negative or abstaining? I mean, how how would that work?
Well, you're normally not signing that anyway. So something to be asked for that, yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
I don't know. I don't know if I'm comfortable with. I think if it's minutes or something innocuous, I guess it's fine. I'm not so sure. I think we ought to be signing. The financial documents and ordinances with. And what I'm not certain is what the state board of a council is going to hit you. I think that's an easy answer for you guys, but.
Yeah, all right, and let's research.
For your signature, so.
Deanna's got a question. Deanna? Go ahead, Deanna. You're muted.
Well, it wasn't really a question. Can you hear me? Okay.
Need to get real close to your microphone, Deanna. We're having a hard time.
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, that's better.
Well, I unmuted myself, but you can hear me.
Well, we can hear you. Keep talking.
You're just having a connectivity issue, it seems like. Can you text in on chat? Is it something simple you can put on a chat? Oh, I guess we don't have that.
Are you able to hear me now?
No, you're breaking up.
Sorry.
You write it on a piece of paper and hold it up or is it a?
I told her to text. I told her to text me. So here she says, my question. And wait a minute.
Since Governor Holcomb said. That everything was via Zoom. Come, we have everything from twenty twenty that was passed. In the minutes, it would say. If it was approved or not, Kamal, there is an ordinance. A resolution, the payroll. The. Claims dockets. Period. If LeMay signed something.
We can hear her text.
Okay, here's what she's saying. She she needs to mute herself, but here here's what she's saying. Deanna, mute yourself while you're.
As full.
Dr. Lemay, can you mute her?
No, I can't. I can only ask her to unmute it, so.
Single file. From two thousand twenty. Ongoing until this is.
But I think the gist of it, what she's saying is no different than what we, as long as the records reflect. Again, the ordinance will show the claims dockets, et cetera. The minutes will show. The issue is making sure that those are accurate and everything is tracked. So I I think that we are saying take the from the outset.
Yeah, what she said is since Governor Holcomb said that everything was via Zoom. Everything from two thousand twenty. That was passed in the minutes. It would say if it was approved or not, whether it's an ordinance or a resolution, the payroll, the claims, the dockets. If LeMay signed some things to that effect. Could his signature act as a full approval for every single file from two thousand twenty ongoing until this is over?
So, Chris, maybe you can check on that and let us know and we'll.
That would be helpful for the auditors.
Yeah, that would be good. Okay. All right, so we're going to get some research on that. Building security system, Mark.
All of you received an email. As a newest member to the team, I've been looking closely at our operations and our overall procedures. And one of the things I want to improve. Is the overall security here at the town hall. To have some better checks and balances as far as the access to the building. What I'm proposing is putting in Ethernet access door controllers. On all the exterior doors, then additionally adding card readers. So that we can actually issue out either a credit card style card or a key fob. And that'll be to an individual person. We can track the time. The date and the employee and or any other individual we authorize access to the building. And then we also can set parameters on it, not allowing access, for instance, after five P M. Just looking at overall increasing the security of the building. Since we are the keeper of the records. We have financial documents here, personnel records, police equipment, police records. I just would really like to see us increase the security of the town hall. And the estimate I have from Sentinel Alarm. Got it up right now is. Twelve thousand one hundred and thirty eight dollars. That includes the installation, the. Software that would be placed on a desktop here. And then also includes all the necessary equipment and everything else to go with it. So.
I wouldn't do.
I'm sorry, Bill.
Would there be ongoing maintenance fees then too?
No, no ongoing maintenance or surcharges. The only thing would be after the warranty is out, if anything goes wrong. We'd have to call Sentinel in to fix it. No different than what we're doing right now with the fire alarm system. So no ongoing reoccurring fees.
John?
Yeah, I think Mark and I talked too. He's going to try to get an addendum to the quote. To see if we could do the same thing with the Fire Department mandor.
And and I would, John, on that note, I would estimate. Just looking at this. It'd probably be a minimum. If you're looking at one entry door. It'd probably be at least additional fifteen hundred, maybe two thousand, since it's a little bit, you know. Ways out from this building. So I still think under fifteen thousand dollars, we can get the whole project done. That would be my estimate.
I would make a motion to approve that we spend no more than fifteen thousand dollars on a new security system.
I would second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Where is the money coming from?
The town.
Well, I I know that, but I mean, like, where?
Bill, where would we get the money from?
Probably have to get from from SED, which is. You know, that's we we got about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year from there. And some of that money has to be spent to pay for the last paving project. But I'm sure we could find fifty thousand. Obviously, I didn't budget. For for the security system. But we do budget. You know, we're if if we find because of some of the other expenses that we need to. We need to do that, we we can still evaluate our. Our financial situation and and go for a. Or an increased authorization.
We could always raise the golf cart fee. All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, okay.
Hey, guys, we've got the budget meeting coming up this week and we're going to knock around some things. So I don't know if you're going to get there, but we'll. Hopefully, we'll be able to trim that down and get a little better where we're at. Okay.
Okay, stop twenty one agreement. We have an agreement with the stop twenty one people. We've actually finished the project at stop twenty one. I would recommend that we sign that thing.
Well, and just to explain a little bit for everybody, it it's an easement agreement that allows the town access to maintain it in the future and ultimately. Mr. Walk can correct me with the technicalities of the project if necessary, but. That property. And that easement and the town's ability to have access to that was a necessary component for the town to protect. The stop and the town stop that it owns. So. Yeah, it was a compromise. I think we've all been through the mill with this one before, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. There was no way we it would have cost us more money to return this the stop twenty one shore protection. Back before we crossed the front of their stop twenty one property that it did to go across their property. So we came to a compromise with them and they've given us a an easement that that. Travels with the property forever. So we always have an easement there. We have a temporary easement for the construction, which we've already used. We have a full time permanent easement. That will be recorded to the county such that that property, there there's never any way for that to change. And. They didn't have the wherewithal to contribute, so we were, we just pretty much had to bite the bullet and go across the whole stop to in order to protect it from house to house.
Will the park board be looking at? Steps and such to get from the top all the way down to the lakeside to the beach?
Yeah, we.
Enough cameras up to speed on that.
That's exactly right, John. We. We left some, we actually had the contractor place some. Steel H piles in a vertical position down there so that we could easily attach some stairs. And they're stout enough that no matter what happens with the lake, we'll always be able to head the stairs. Okay, good.
Okay, so I make a motion that we sign the agreement. Do I hear a second? Mary Lou seconded. All in favor, say aye.
I second it.
Aye.
Aye.
Good. Uh, mailing to request resident addresses. Bill, is this one of yours?
No, I think John had asked, well, John Wall had asked. About it and I when when we. And I when when we started talking about, I was thinking, we can't email asking for emails because we're that we already got those. So what the so then I realized that what we were asking for was a was a mailing, a snail mail. Is that is that correct? I mean, and we we have we have the ability to print out labels.
The thought was, you know, we have, Bill's, the town's done a fine job of asking for emails. Uh, Mary Lou can speak to it. The water department asks for emails on occasion. But I think it, you know, in this current age with the amount of information we like to exchange back and forth between the town and the residents, there are times when there are emergency announcements. So, you know, I know Chief Swistec has has made a great effort to to communicate with us by email. And I and I think, as Mary Lou says, there's a few stragglers, outliers out there that will probably never reach with email. But I would like to make one more attempt sometime. I think the origin of the emails that we have now seems to have kind of been a circuitous path. There were some that were generated during the elections. There were some that came from um from Bill's own email list generated by the town. I'd I'd like to see us make one more concerted effort by way of a mailing to give them the reasons behind it, assure them that we're not sharing those emails with anybody else, as Bill always does. He he does it with a blind email, so there aren't, there's no sharing of these emails. I think there's sometimes there's a a fear that if people give their email to the town, everybody in the town winds up with the email. That's not the case. So I would like to suggest that the town sends out a letter to all the water department lists, asking them to give Bill their email one last time. Hopefully, we'll get a few more in. And then at that point, we've done everything we can to make those email lists adequate for in information exchange to as many as we can.
And I did add a uh, actually, I had had Meg Collins put a thing on the website asking people for their email addresses. Um, but you think we ought to mail?
Yeah.
But do you think we need to mail mail something to every? We'd have to mail it to every resident, right?
Yeah, the only problem, there's still going to be people that don't use email. They don't want to. And so I'm not sure how we could reach out to them. I really don't.
If we do this, Mayor, and then we we take a spreadsheet with your mailing list and we just have a column for those that returned emails, then we can be scientific enough to say, okay, out of, I have no idea what the mailing list consists of, call it 1,000.
1,100, yeah.
Okay, if it's just call it 1,000 and we find out there's 200 that don't have emails and that we know we're never reaching 200 people with our email communications. If we find out there's six of them, then we know that. I I it'd be nice to know. I don't know, Bill, if you even, what what's your number right now?
It's 700.
Okay, that's what I mean. I think, Mayor, for for 400 more, I think it's worth an.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, well, in addition to that, and I know that the water department has been good about getting information. But I do remember over the years that when we had emergencies, people don't, people have not kept their, I can remember calling phone numbers that are on the water list to tell them, you know, some kind of an emergency. And there's a deer, dead deer, lying in your front yard. And the 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 even the phone numbers are not always accurate. So so as people have given up landlines and gone to only to to uh, you know, to cell phones, uh, we probably could add, if we're going to spend the money for a for mailing, we should probably also ask them to make sure that they've they've got current information because it's a real safety issue to.
Right, Bill, and I'll take it a step further and say that oftentimes when we get alarm calls at houses, they don't have a key holder. So in other words, if you have an alarm company and you're do and you're playing the game correctly, there's a key holder authorized in the local community to present a key to the fire department so we don't have to break a window when they have an alarm that's going off and they're not at home. So if we could ask, we can make that part of this letter, I can help you. And we'll.
Okay.
Blur in there that says.
John, that would be helpful, but I just to give people that are in the audience an example. When Bill and I first started working together last year, the guys from the water department came in and said there was a house on Lake Shore Drive on the waterside and the water meter was going nuts. And they weren't sure if it was flooded or not. So I looked up the name and I went into Bill and I said, isn't that a friend of one of your bridge players? And he said, yeah, because we even had a phone number for him. So he called her. She called us back, gave us the son's phone number. We called him. And then uh, there wasn't flooding. It was just a bad water meter, but we didn't know. So it is important.
Yeah, so, yes, so.
So I can, I I'll get with you and we'll we'll put a little paragraph in there about it, requesting phone numbers, too.
Yeah, no, I I think I think it's worth the 55 cents or others goes on a postcard and it could be.
Well.
Yeah.
We can get a group rate or we can get a a discount because it's 1,100.
Yeah, no, I I think I think that's I think that's a worthy.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Okay, uh, Notre Dame St. Patty 5K run. Uh, I guess Notre Dame Parish has a five a 5K run that they want to run through Long Beach. Uh, I forget what date it's on.
I think it's towards the end of March, like the 23rd or I read it.
The 20th, Saturday, the 20th.
Okay.
Anybody have any objection to letting them run through Long Beach?
No, as long as there's no snow.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Uh, okay, and then the added agenda item, town manager. Um, town council's been kicking around the idea of hiring a town manager. Um, over the years, the um responsibilities of the town clerk has expanded beyond the statutory responsibilities of the town manager. Uh, it's gotten to the point where it's kind of gotten away from us a bit. Uh, and so we're basically um proposing that the ten that we consider hiring a town manager. Um, I think what we probably need to do is to pursue that. Uh, I think we need to come up with a job description and then once we come up with a job description, hopefully agree to uh advertise for the position. Um, open any discussion on that that anybody wants to have. Otherwise, uh, I guess I just look for a motion to uh pursue it and to come up with a job description.
Well, I'll move that we pursue pursue it. And uh, I'll ask, including my motion that Mary Lou, since she's got the HR background, try to put together some proposed uh job descriptions for this for this particular position. And then uh, report back to the council as soon as possible. Um, hopefully, we could put a date to have this done. So that'd be my motion to proceed with with it, with a job description, have Mary Lou uh work on it.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Unanimous, okay. Uh, public comments. If you have a comment, raise your hand. None on page one?
It's Anita Remidge. I raised my hand.
You did? Okay, well, go ahead, Anita.
Hi, Anita Remidge is 2,300.
There it is, yep.
Um, I had comments tonight that whether they were ethical or legal had to do with um Mary Lou McFadden being paid um as a council member, as a water board member, and also as a water board, I'm not sure, employee or contractor. And I guess I'm just curious in terms of who makes the decisions, um, who approves the budgets, who approves any hiring, for how long, how many hours, and at what pay rate. And it also seems pretty obvious tonight that there's, you know, I I guess I don't understand what is happening over in the town building because Mary Lou, tonight even mentioned, when Bill and I started working together, there seems to be like this overlap between the clerk's office, Mr. Difuniak, and the water department, whether it's because they're just next to one another. But there seems to be quite a bit of um overlapping there and sharing of information. So that's one of my concerns about who's who's approving different things and whether there are any um oversights on any auditing or anything. My other comment has to do with um Mr. Johnstone. Welcome to the town council. Um, I do not believe that you were very much involved with the town before you ran for election. And I haven't seen any involvement since the election in November of 2019. I'm hopeful that you do get involved, other than being elected to the Fire Commission and APC, on which I sit for quite a while. Um, I I uh, I know that there was a group called Reunite Long Beach. And Mr. Coker, I know that you said that you would you would only vote for someone who didn't run in the previous election, yet you chose to go with Mr. Johnstone. Mr. Neff was an independent who was running. And uh, there was concern about his travel schedule. And it's ironic that Mr. Johnstone is now out of town until the end of March. Um, there was concern uh about a uh financial background. But at the interview, I wasn't asked about my financial background, nor was Zach Neff, nor were the other candidates. So I I I just want to bring this up for people who were not aware that there was even an opening in town council, that there was an interview, that there is someone new. Mr. Johnstone, you're a neighbor of mine. I just, I really, really hope that now, I mean, now you have to get involved because you're being appointed. It's unfortunate that you didn't get involved in this town before now. Um, and that's it I have. That's all I have. Welcome.
I'll take it as a welcome.
Uh, and as far as just I I I think there was a lot there. Uh, but Bill is responsible for the accounting uh at the water department. Uh, and so it's not inappropriate for him to be involved in that. Um, and again, part of the oversight that you're talking about um is the reason why we're looking into the possibility of a town manager. So.
For what it's worth.
Any other public comments? Any other, any, any, anybody want to respond to anything? Any other public comments? I'm going to look again. Sorry, I missed your hand up, Anita. Nope, I don't see any. Okay. Um, council comments. Any council comments? Bill, claims approval.
Check number 17797 through 17867, Payroll for January 2021 was 31,749.59.
Do I hear a motion to approve that?
Make the motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Um, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Aye. Do I hear a second? I'll second it. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Good night, everybody.
Good night.